Hey, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this joint meeting. And what a great opportunity we have tonight. We're glad to welcome Steve Nygren. He's the founder of Serenby, and he believes that if you want to change the world, start in your own backyard. The vision for the wellness community of Serenby was born in an effort to protect the beautiful rural land and farm his family owned and had retired on after a successful career in the hospitality industry. One little quick something before we get started is that after Steve finishes his presentation, you know, there'll be plenty of time for questions, and we'll have Angie, who will be manning a microphone, along with Vernon, who will man the microphone. So if you'll raise your hand, and we'll get you. So let's give a warm welcome to Steve Nygren.
Thank you. I had a minute to drive around as I arrived, and, you know, love the historic Franklin. I mean, that's, once I realized I was going to be a developer, that's what I studied. You know, the towns from 100 years ago or more, and then the countryside of England. So you're here, and I know your challenge is, what are you going to do with everything else, right? And that's what maybe we can, we can talk about. So very similarly, you know, we've seen development just to change. I've seen that happen in metro Atlanta over the course of the years. I arrived there in 69. Now, how many people here are native Franklin, or in this area? All right. And so, except for those people, how many have been here at least 50 years? Uh huh, okay. How many have been here less than 10 years? Less than five? Very good, okay. You know, when I, when I got my, picked up my rental car at the airport, and he said, "Where are you going?" And I told him Franklin. And he says, "Oh, California." I didn't catch it immediately, and then he explained to me what he was talking about. So clearly, you caught it from that. So that's some of the development pressure you're obviously feeling. And so, we, I was a hospitality guy, right in the center of the city, opened restaurants around the country. And I found that the weekends on our farm, which was just 30 miles southwest, is where our family actually connected with each other and with nature and so many things. And so, it really was my value shift, and this is back in 1991. I think more people understand what I'm talking about since the pandemic, when everybody kind of started reevaluating what was important and what their life was all about. And so, when we saw, I moved the family there full-time in 94, sold everything, and in my sixth year of retirement, there were some threats that urban sprawl was going to come our way. Now, a little different than what you've got here, the pressure, we were in the southwest, where nothing had happened through the decades of development in Atlanta. Schools were terrible, no infrastructure, but suddenly, it was the last cheap land, and so, development was starting to come that way. Of course, I do what many, to protect myself, I started buying land. You know, I didn't want much land, just anything that touched us. And at 900 acres, I realized I couldn't keep doing that. And what, what were we going to do? And so, that led me into what you're going to see here. So all this rural land was beautiful. This gives you some idea. This is metro Atlanta. This is from the growth chart from 2000, and you can see within that, that circle, the center of the city, we're the last available land in that, in that area. And it was all totally, totally rural. And so, what were we going to do? Now, landowners there were both one of two things. I don't know where you all stand here. How many landowners are in the room? All right, so we've got all the, did you raise your hand? No, okay. So we only have the planners, but generally, you're going to face the two teams. And I found that inherited landowners were the most active. In fact, our, in our first meeting, I'd had coffees with some of the largest, but my first meeting of those that owned 200 acres or more, 90 minutes into it, I called the meeting off, because we were back to like, 6th grade playground, people calling each other names, because it was two sides. One was bring on, bring on the bulldozers, that's what we've been waiting for, for payday, and the other half, don't you dare touch this land. And so, that was one of the most difficult. And then you had land speculators in the area, and then you had people like us who had found this wonderful countryside, minutes from downtown, 30, 35 minutes from downtown. So had to find out a conversation, or what we could do, and finding options, because these are the two groups that usually you battle. I think what you're dealing with, maybe in your outer area, is exactly what everywhere in the United States is dealing with, is 70% of our near-term growth will continue to be in the greenfield lands that surround our urban areas, and that's where the biggest threat is. Whether it's for agricultural land, preserve land, development land, every, that's becoming the land as everyone moves to the cities. So over a two-year period, we brought 500 landowners together for a common vision. And so, that, that was quite a chat. Now, the largest landowners, my wife's a great cook, and so, we had them to dinner. It was the two largest. And after several great dinners and several cases of wine, we got them to go along with it. So that was when I thought, okay, I've got it. That's when I had anyone that owned 200 acres or more. There were just 36 of us that owned 20,000 acres. And so, that's many times the case. But after that disastrous meeting, I got some information that I realized it was going to be a, I couldn't just be vision, I had to get some real statistics. And, and to talk about value, not just vision, but value, because that's what the pro-development group really wanted. And the Urban Land Institute had just completed some studies on why we had so many golf courses developed in the 70s and 80s. It's because the bankers loved the spreadsheets on the value of those lots. Any bankers here? Financial folks? Okay, so they usually dictate what happens. And so, they found, though, that over half the people that were purchasing those expensive lots on the golf course played golf twice for less a year. So what does that tell you? Green space. So if we could, if we, if we could just have green space, and you see this with places at national forests and what have you. So I called one of the neighbors who was a big, one of those anti, just anti about everything, in his 80s, and I called him. I knew I had to get him back, because there was a segment. And so, I said, "Mr. Thompson, I've got some more information. Will you come back?" "Son," now, I was in my 50s, "no one's going to tell me what to do with my land." And I said, "Well, you know, Mr. Thompson, your neighbor's across the road. One has died. Their kids left ages ago when their grandkids were born, because the education was so bad, and they're not coming back." And Fulton County in those days would allow you to do anything. There was nothing happening south of I-20, if you're familiar with Atlanta, and the county was giving an 80% reduction on all permit fees. That's how little was happening in 2000 in South Fulton County. And so, I said, "Anybody that buys that land across from you, they're going to let them do whatever they want, and you're not going to have a thing to say about what happens. And I'm inviting you to be a voice in what happens to your neighbor's land." Thought about that for a minute, and he said, "Are you going to have that peach cobbler?" So we kept baking and calling meetings. So the key is, you always have some sort of food, and you can get the people, the higher the quality of food, the better turnout. So, you know, I see you've got a pretty good crowd here tonight, though. That's good for you, so maybe the subject. So that's, that's what we did. I formed a, a organization called the Chattahoochee Hill Country Alliance. It was $2 an acre to belong with a minimum of $50 to just service the group. And over the course of the two years, we gradually got the membership, was to gauge the support. And as I started this, our county commissioner came to me, and he said, "Steve, you're causing all kinds of trouble down there." I said, "What do you mean, Commissioner? This is, you know, this could be wonderful." Now, if you know, Fulton County is 80 miles long, with Atlanta right in the middle of it. And he said, "You know, it's, north part of the county has something that sounds a lot like what you're talking about. And they brought it before the council six months ago, and there were 200 people that showed up in t-shirts for, and 200 in ball caps against. Don't set me up to where I have to vote against half of my constituents down here." And so, I looked at him, and I said, "I'll tell you what, Commissioner. If you'll give me your public support and the support of the Fulton County Planning Department, I won't bring us before you if we have more than 30% opposition." We shook hands on that and moved forward. We had coffees. As I mentioned, I'd first pulled the large landowners together, and I had them all agree finally that maybe we could come together and have something that would benefit them if we did a plan. But then we had 500 landowners, and so, we set up team leaders on seven groups, divided everybody according to their size. I remember 2000, I was just learning how to use Excel spreadsheets, and the county had just digitized their tax maps, and you could do all this stuff. And so, we had neighborhood coffees, either in their house or their church. The rule was, they had to have fresh baked, home baked goods and fresh coffee. And we started meeting. And we went from, from those meetings to the public meetings. And that center is, is what the area used to have, is an old school where everyone met, and they had never had more than 30 people show up at a public meeting of planning, and we totally filled the room. It was, it was a, a winter day, and I remember we had to open the doors and the windows. Irregardless of what the fire department said, there were just, physically wasn't any room. We ended up having to move that to the gym in the local high school. We had so inspired a community to take charge of their own destiny. And normally, what happens is, everyone kind of thinks nothing's going to happen, and they wait for somebody to decide what's going to happen, and then everybody decides they don't want that. And that's where we get into the battles. And I see some heads shaking, you know, across the country. That's kind of what happens. By the time I took this to the commission, we had 90, or 80% of the land paying dues into the organization to support this. The 20% that didn't support us also never opposed us. They stayed home. I call them now the front porch critics, right? Have some of those? And so, this is, this is the big thing that, some of the graphics from Randall Aronut that we looked at, and this is generally what's happened. This is current landscapes on our boundary areas and where we are. And generally, when development starts, everybody looks at downzoning, let's go to 5 acres and 10 acres, thinking that's going to be a downzoning. Of course, it takes the same amount of roads. It spreads out just the same usually as it does. But there, but there are options, and one of my models was the countryside of England. I'm sure if you've been to the countryside of England, but when we were retiring, it was a great place to take the kids, because the language is the same, and it was a different culture. And after World War II, they put great land laws in, because they couldn't afford for the island to experience the urban sprawl that everywhere else was starting to do. So if you go over there, there are, they have a lot of people in the hamlets, villages, and towns. But one of the key things I noticed is, the buildings don't start following the road out of town. Now, imagine that. I mean, when I arrived here, and I started driving the beautiful historic street, and then I could see where suddenly, the other buildings started happening, and there wasn't that boundary. You could tell, oh, this isn't historic anymore. In fact, this changes pretty fast. And, and that was one of the biggest things that we noticed. And, and it was towns in the countryside, and all kinds of sized towns. And so, that was, that was what we were looking. How could we do that? But generally, what happens is, a developer comes in, wants to do something, you hit the zoning, and all the fireworks start, right? But there is an option, and it's balanced growth. Where is that? Now, there are, see, that rings true, right? Obviously, you know, we're, we're, somebody's calling in on that one. In, in the balanced development and the traditional practices, traditional practices is basically 5 and 10 acre lots. You have the exact same number of commercial and residential in the center balanced growth. It's just dense, and it's smaller lots together with the common area shared versus everyone fencing their own common area. Even if it's fenced and you have cattle, it's contiguous pastures, continuous fields, rather than spread out. And so, that, that's one of the biggest things. Now, an interesting thing we did in our second public meeting, we did a written survey to see what everyone thought. And that came out that everyone wanted to downsize to 10, one unit per 10 acres. Then we did a visual survey, and everyone decided they want a density of four units to an acre clustered. And what we were able to do then is open everyone's mind to where, what, what everyone thought was preservation actually wasn't. And so, that was really allowed everyone to roll up their sleeves and says, "Okay, let's figure this out." And so, that's, that's the big thing, is to get everyone to, to just start figuring out. So here, here are three maps. The map in, this was the 36 landowners, 32 participated. The other was a bank, a couple who weren't interested until all of a sudden, it was moving through, and then got very interested. Whole stories, fun stories. But that's the group that came together, and I knew I had to have that group with some consistent ideas before we could move forward. It's the large landowners that have to buy in. But then I rolled that map up, and we got a grant, and we started the public process with the 500. Through five public meetings, and organized with land planners, Eco's planning took us there. You've been through those dots, we have all the dots, and you go through all this in a series of meetings and what have you. The final map they came up was in the center. And then although we had the planning department with us, there were a lot of other departments that had to sign up. And that was for the first time that we found out that the county had passed the bonds for the expansion of the sewer plant, based on running 40 connections to this 40,000 acres. So they almost derailed this whole thing, just over, you know, over that. So there, there are a lot of people to take into account. But we finally got everybody on board. Now, look at these three maps with three totally different focuses. Large landowners, if you're going to develop, put on my land. Small landowners, if you're going to develop, not in my backyard. And the county is, where's the infrastructure, where are the highways, how's it going to work? Basically, everyone came to the same conclusion. And that's what I found out, if you start with a, with an empty chart, not, this is what you think should happen, educate everyone on options, it can really change the outcome. And generally, if you're listening to the land, there aren't a lot of options. You all end up coming to the same thing. We're in a mess around this country, because everybody battles, and it's a bunch of a compromise, and so, none of us have much of anything, except average. And that's why, what is it, 70% of the people don't like where they live? You know, that's probably why you're getting so many people moving here from California, right, or in other places. But, but be careful, because then they'll, you'll find out the same surveys here, you know, that's what happens. What we came up with is, the old way, we just did what Atlanta had done, took the numbers on the 40,000 acres we're dealing with, and determined if we just followed those same statistics, and that is a 17-county area of metro Atlanta, what's considered the trading district, we would disturb 80% of the land for 30,000 houses. The plan we ended up coming up with is, we're going to actually disturb only 30% of the land, and we'll put 20% more housing. Now, key, the infrastructure is 40%, 60% less to both install and maintain on the clustered version. So once you really start looking at it, it makes lots of sense, no matter what lens you're looking through. The old way is car-dependent. The new way is walkable and not going to be car-dependent. And if you look at where we're headed in the future, you know, car dependency is not going to be a way to go. It's, it's a system, you know, having one several-ton machine to move one person, and 90% of, or what, 90% are parked all the time, and we have three asphalt spaces for every car. You know, all the analysts look at, I went to a TED conference, and they showed in an analytic, that this system just is, is one of the most non-functioning system, but we're still in it, because there hasn't been an alternative, and, and that will change. So TDRs, and I don't know how familiar you all with TDRs, in 2000, we passed some of the first TDR regulations in the South. I know Tennessee has that regulation. I don't think it's been used a lot. It's probably one of the most brilliant tools, because small landowners are the ones that get pushed out for all kinds of reasons. Either taxes go up to where they can't afford it, because taxes are always on the highest and best use, or they have a financial need, and they end up selling the family land. This allows, generally, you can monetize 50% of the value. It also takes your taxes permanently down. I know there's, there's Jerry Ag things, but you can, this permanently takes it down. And the value stays for the county, though, because it's, you're moving the development right. And, you know, out west, people understand severing rights, mineral rights, water rights. It's, it's been, you know, for a long time, it's been severed. I found the South has, you know, in Georgia, "Man, you either own the land or you don't. What do you mean severed rights?" And so, I found that's why they really haven't been very popular in the South. But this just gives you a graph. You, you take the development rights that would happen on a land, and you can decide how many. You can keep, you know, sight for your kids or whoever, and, and you actually sell the development rights. And it's part of the deed, and you could just never put a house on it. You can still farm it, you can still sell it, you can still leave it to the kids. It doesn't change anything, except it lowers your taxes. And it, and you have monetized part of it, you're not having to sell. So there's all sorts of reasons for small landowners that this is good. And that's, that's, that's who participate. Generally, it's anyone with 30 acres or less can participate. And then this allows you to save that rural area, and you move that, and various places use it differently. We, the two counties that we brought in, the governments that we brought in to educate our people, one was Montgomery County, Maryland, and they've divided the county in half, and they want all the development to come towards Washington DC and save that area. They've done a great job of managing it through the years. The county, the county managed that bank, and where that lands, they, they'll buy the development rights, and then where they allow that to land, they manage the kind of development they want. So for instance, if you are planning to build a $3 million house, you might need three development rights to do so. But if you're going to build workforce housing, you might be able to do 20 units per one development right. And so, they manage that in a way, so you're, what you're doing with development rights is you're, you know, generally, your city councils or county commissioners give density for a state dinner and the promise of higher taxes, right? It's that developer that comes in and convinces everybody to go ahead and do it. This takes it away from that, and it puts it in the monetary system. Now, the local government has to determine the receiving and sending areas, but then it's all on a monetary system. So you don't have winners and losers from a land's perspective standpoint, and, and that really helps. Boulder County, they just basically said, "Okay, you can do it anywhere." And if you look at that from the air, it's a patchwork quilt. But you're not sure which, you'll have sections, because everything's in square, in, in big sections out there. You'll have a quarter of the section densely developed, and fields in the rest. Well, you don't understand that that's permanently saved, that that's where the density came from. So we use sort of the English model. And so, any landowner with 200 acres or more in our area, and you can have three landowners come together, have the rights to develop, but you have, you can only disturb 30% of your land. But you get 100% movement. So if you have 200 acres, you put 200 dwelling units on 30% of the land, and then you, you preserve the rest. If you're a village, you can have higher density, you don't have to save as much, but you still only have one unit. So you have to buy more of your neighbor's lands to get the high density. Now, now, here's the economics of it. I mean, when we were doing this, everybody thought I was crazy, except the planning commissions. We got all kinds of awards from the American Planning Association, what have you. But in effect, anyone interested in, in developing didn't understand what we were doing, because it was, it was sprawl development. We had basically, for 20 years, stopped. Now, we passed this zoning in 2002. We passed TDR legislation in 2003. We broke ground on Serenby in 2004. By 2007, we had enough runway that when we filed to become our own city, the state granted that based on the projections of Serenby's taxes alone, and we were just a small part. So they could see how the city. Now, until then, I mean, we, this area was poor, it couldn't afford its own, you know, if your house caught fire, it was going to burn down. You know, if you had an illness, you might as well put them in the car, because it was going to be an hour before the ambulance came. There were no real services, because it, it just, the taxes weren't there. All right, now, if you got the math, I helped you with the math there. So here, we have 40,000 acre city. Of our 2,000 acres that we own, we have entitled 1,140 acres. That allows us to disturb 340. In the last tax year, about 230 of those acres had buildings on it that were taxable. So we are a fraction of the land, and today, we represent 65%. That says 55%. It's actually 65% of the taxes that have a full-time fire, full-time police, full-time public works. So economics work. You can, you can sell expensive houses next to green space. We're proving that the golf course concept, once you have, and that's what happens. You know, we, we, we see the headlines when we have displacement of affordable housing. We don't see enough headlines when the executive housing disappears, and that's part of the anger in America today, is the executive housing disappeared, and the services have gone along with it. So you have to look at a balanced tax base and how that does that. But this graph just proves the value of, of open space that people will pay for. We are the first to develop under those guidelines. Now, 20 years later, post-pandemic, that's about to change. I mean, we have so many things being entitled now, projects, et cetera. So we've got about, what, 15,000 acres that's entitled with the city right now. No one's in various areas. So this is about to really change. We just stopped it for 20 years, and now bingo, it's, it's, but thank goodness, we have the basis of the zoning in place. There's an aerial that shows you a little bit of what like Serenby looks like, that, you know, with, with green space. And we have done all of the roads in relationship to the land. So I ask our civil and our land planners to act as though we didn't have bulldozers to level the land, which is the popular area, and we don't pay attention to what the natural topography is. We just know that we can level it, and so, that's what we do. And all the systems have been set up that that's what we're used to doing. That's the most efficient and supposedly the least expensive. You know, several, a few years ago, Urban Land Institute invited me to Dallas to their spring meeting, and my topic was the expense of environmental development. And of course, my whole presentation was the cost savings. And so, this is a, you know, this is a perception that people don't understand, and I could give you a whole hour's presentation on the cost savings that we had. But one is just the landscape. Look at that, that looks like a much older town. I mean, pieces of that, we've broken ground on in less than five years. You know, and so, it, it really gives a patina of a much older town. So So we believe that, you know, in a community, a viable development is preserve the land, respects nature, conserves the energy, encourages a healthy living, fosters community, and reflects the area's beauty. Very little development over the last 20 years could say yes to any of those principles. And that's one of the issues we have. And there's all kinds of rules and regulations and all sorts of things that have gotten us here. I call it the unintended consequences. Stay tuned. I have a book coming out next year, provided I get it in Wednesday. That's this week. So, and it's tracing this all the way back, you know. Eisenhower came back for the war and wanted the interstate highway system so we could move war equipment across the country. It's never been used for that. But look at how it's affected so many other things. And you just see there's all kinds of things that we really have not controlled the purpose and we layer these things on. So the future is ours to imagine and to make sustainable reality. And that's, that's really what we've done and that's why it's so important. There are options, we can change this. And I'm going to go into a lot more detail, those that want to be, that are planning to be there tomorrow. You won't see really hardly any of this. It really goes into Saranby's actual land plan, green spaces, housing, the mix and that kind of thing. But I think we have time for some questions. Yes. I know you want the mics so that it's recorded. Who's man in the mics?
You keep the mic and I'll just point who's next.
Hello?
It's just for the recording, right? So I'm not going to hear anything. Okay, all right. First of all, thank you for being here. I think I'm largely to blame for you being here and adding this session tonight. So I'm both apologetic and also grateful. So I really appreciate that. We made a trip down to Saranby a couple of years ago. To say that that had a profound effect on a couple of us would be an understatement. I think we've probably invoked the name Saranby in the last couple of years more times than you have. We talk about you often. You know, obviously incredible growth here and we have been trying to strike some balance. I'm going to say we and us a little bit here because there's an alderman, Alderman Baggett, who couldn't be here tonight, that he and I both separately worked pretty hard to create a development concept in our Envision Franklin Plan that mirrored what Saranby was doing, 70% open space, 30% development. We had heard from the community through the Envision Franklin, our land use process, that they wanted more open space. We did a survey of citizens, what do they want? More open space. We would talk to residents, they said, I still want to see fields and trees when I look out the windows, I'm driving down the road. And so we attempted the discussions around TDRs and all of that, but largely was felt, but that may be too complex. And so we needed to find some other tools to put in the toolbox that would allow us the opportunity to do what the residents were asking us. So we got Village Green into the design, into our land use plan and it was approved and we thought all was great. We thought especially when you look at those areas out in our urban growth boundary, out towards our stretches, we thought for sure that that would be the best place for those kinds of things. We had large tracts of land, we wanted to create that sort of blend into that rural character and we were pretty excited about it. Twice now, concepts have come in for Village Green and both times they have been removed or debated pretty strongly. In fact, one example on our east was a 600-acre tract. It was Village Green, it would have preserved 70% open space. It was then changed by a vote to Rural Reserve, which we immediately removed. In one failed vote, in one vote, we lost 150 acres of preserved open space and exchanged to a sea of rooftops that sprawled out to the edge of our urban growth boundary. And with no commercial note in it, every one of those people in that house, in those houses have to get in their cars and go drive in our streets to go find essential services. It is basically, we went backwards from where we were trying to be, from where you have pointed us, and inspired us to go back to where we were previously. So we don't know if we either haven't done the appropriate education of what Village Green is really trying to do for our community, really is inspired and trying to do the right thing and balancing growth, or are there fatal flaws in our concept that are tripping people up who have to make the decision about whether or not Village Green is a viable concept for us or not. Prior to that, we had a 50% max on conserved open space. We are falling back to that. And so I, we're not laying this at your feet to give us all the answers, but obviously we're going back to the source of inspiration here. How do we, at this point, champion forward a Village Green concept with a community that seems to not quite understand it or not really want 70% open space?
Did you have peach cobbler at those meetings?
Maybe that was our fault.
See, I mean, it's simple.
That was it.
You just beat him and, you know. And so who is it voted against it? What body?
It was our planning commission.
And is there anyone from the planning commission here?
No.
Okay, could anyone speak as to why you voted against it? You might not have personally, but it's your body that you represent.
It's really not, it's not about one party.
No, I understand, but this is...
And it wasn't on a specific development plan. Right. It was applying Mulaney's concept.
I understand. I understand. I just want to know.
Okay. Probably have to talk to the question. I'm not there.
So one of your problems is you're not having good open discussions. I mean, you gotta, you gotta work this out as neighbors before you take votes. And we had lots of meetings. We had a lot of knock-down dragouts. And we ended up with everybody getting more of what they thought they'd want. And that's hard because, hey, you're not different. You're true of almost every community across the United States. It's why Saranby is so unusual. I call it radical common sense. You know, I don't care if you have wetlands, I don't care what you have, if it's saved, but you have to look at the mass that's being saved and you have to look at the averages. And that is the key. And it just, this is how we have lost the battle. Because we might focus on one thing that somebody doesn't like and the next thing you know, we have fields covered with houses. And it's all auto-dependent. And one of the very worst things, you know, we had this, we changed 40,000 acres, but we have a four-county green space agreement on 65,000 acres. We tried getting those, and that's three other counties. We had these similar meetings and tried to get them to come in. Now, two of the counties, Carroll and Douglas, it's basically, they're each 5,000 and they're basically, it's three landowners in each one. So, and nothing's happened there. I mean, they're big holdings and savings. But Kaeda was right next to us on our southern end. And I can't tell you how many of the landowners, the historic landowners have said, I wished we'd understood what you were saying. Because there is about 5,000 acres that is exactly what you just described. And my car has, you know, one of those big screens in it now. And so it's, what I love about it most is I can see what's going on for about a mile on every side. So I might be driving down a road and I don't know what's happening. And I was headed for a presentation down in Florida on this very issue and some of the details. And I happened to notice, and so I took a picture of the landscape of all the cul-de-sac subdivisions that had happened to those farms that are just, I pull out and I can see Saranby in that very map. It's our neighbors to the south across the county line. And I noticed that coming in from the one road, the main road, it came in and of course it doesn't come through. And I went down and turned and came, you know, down the other road and they've got some, and these two subdivisions backed up to each other from these two different roads that are at 90 degrees. So it's wonderful you can do these things. So I went on Google and I got, picked up the addresses on the two that were, and they're all in the same school district. And so I bet these two houses, or their neighbors, have kids going to school together. And there's forest and who knows what. You could self-Google, there's no paths or nothing. So I put those addresses in to see what would happen if those kids had a playdate. You know, we complain about our kids being on screens. Well, what else are they going to do? Those two addresses to get from door to door is 17 miles. And yet the houses are less than 400 yards apart backing up with forest or stream behind them. But there's no rules of connectivity. Those kids, those parents wouldn't let them out on the streets because you have to go through main, maybe busy roads. And so it's far more than losing open land. We're destroying the way we live. We're turning parents into chauffeurs. And we have fearful kids that do not know how to find their way in the world. Has anyone read Richard Lou's Last Child in the Woods? Have you read it? You know the concept. Last Child in the Woods came out. Part of our kids' brains, the tuaterate glands are not developing. This is science that's shown it. The study started because professors were finding smart kids had no common sense. And the study found that there's a piece of the brain that develops until you're 22. Past that, nothing you can do about it. And I think one of the best things is a picture that Rich has that's a bunch of kids out in the open forest, like streams we have, they come across the stream. Not much water in it and there's rocks and all the older kids hit the rocks and go on. And it focuses in on a three-year-old and his face and he's standing there and you can just imagine he's trying to figure out if his legs are long enough to hit those stones that everyone else has been on to get across to the other side. And Rich says, few kids have that opportunity today and if they do, there's a parent that picks them up and puts them on the other side. And so we are depriving in so many ways. And how we have developed with cul-de-sac non-connectivity is one of the biggest reasons. And I think we're seeing that effect. I see it all over. Yes.
Thank you. Matt, thanks for speaking that. Education is missing, absolutely. That's key. I agree with you because somebody called me up that lives in the county and they wanted to meet with me to tell me why Franklin Green, why I did not understand Franklin Green, or Village Green. Franklin, I know where I am. Village Green. And I'm like, why I don't understand it? Let's talk about maybe why you don't understand it because I got that concept. It's right here. And so I think education and then our county is like dotting the landscape with one per acre, one per five acres all over the place. A lot of development's happening out there. But I wanted to say, the... Yeah, you go ahead.
But we're not lazy because we don't love everyone.
I figured, we said something, I was going to say, now I see your problem. I hope you were taking attendance levels as to who's walking out the room.
We're going to go do their job and hopefully do it well. Well, last thing, floodplain was mentioned. But I think there's ways to work around that and still keep a lot of activity there. But what's missing is connectivity. And you mentioned that. And don't you think connectivity is one of the keys to these developments? Because I think you just spoke to it. And for some reason, I don't think we get connectivity very well here. I mean, I'm a huge proponent of it and yet it gets voted down and down and down because when we do developments and everything, the county says, no, you can't enter into our streets, you cannot. So you have to put an emergency gate everywhere. Emergency gates are all over our town. So one of the problems is our connectivity. Can you speak to that?
Just from my peek, I saw that. I've got some slides specifically addressing that tomorrow on how we do that. Connectivity and beauty are two things we don't talk about enough. And now there's all kinds of studies, especially post-pandemic, about your mental attitude is affected by connection to nature and to each other. And we've been building places that separate us from both for the last several decades. And we, and part of nature is beauty, but beauty can also be buildings. You look at historic Franklin, it's beautiful. That's, you're getting a lot of people. Architecture, that we paid attention to details, where columns, you know, how buildings were done. We stopped doing that. And that affects our physical being and our mental attitude, which is health as well. And it's huge. It's huge. And you know, education, it was interesting, in the early days, we had, because we had terrible education, you know, public. And so through our institute, we brought Dr. Pekatsky in and we had a community meetings about what did education mean and how are we going to stand it up? And one of the most meaningful, he had us all break up into, you know, these little groups of four, you've been to those. And he wanted us to talk about one of the most meaningful education experiences we had had as a child that we still use today and could reflect on. We came back as a group and he asked us, all those who described an experience that was inside a classroom, please raise your hand. And about four people did. And so today we think education happens in a classroom and we blame the teachers or the Department of Education and the school board for not educating our children. And the truth is, it's the built environment because we put all of our kids in prisons. We're so fearful. Then, you know, that education is in the stream running to houses. It's different and that's where it happens. And so our built environment, we don't think about the built environment being the problem with education and I think it's one of the major problems. So it's the tentacles to decisions you make on how you're going to allow future development or how you're going to redo the development. You know, major cities, you have that decision. You know, I often think, and I know in some of the history and things, you realize the Great Mall in Washington DC between the Capitol and the White House and the monuments, that was all buildings 150 years ago. They moved all the buildings to make that green happen. I was, I was recently in Ottawa and it's amazing what they're doing in their connectivity and streets, closing streets, tearing buildings down to make greenways. And then I was part of Stouffer's, that's how they moved to Atlanta, they opened hotels. And I was there some now, woo, a lot of years ago, in the mid-'60s, when the arch had just been finished to open Stouffer's Hotel there. And St. Louis, I mean, there's lots of money. And they have not understood the sensuality of green space or open space. And they have done a terrible job of filling in. I remember the plans back in the '60s on what they were going to do with the arch and all the green space and they connect. Somebody had plans and guess what? Somebody decided that land was too valuable and now there's ugly square buildings on them. So, you know, you have decisions, no matter what the structure is there, you have decisions on what, how you're going to have connecting, what's going to be, you've got something you're dying to...
Sure. Great. Thank you for coming in and sharing with us. I'm Greg Caesar, I'm an alderman here. I'm perhaps the only one that's not been to Saranby, but I've heard Saranby enough that I feel like it's a part of my family now.
So we need to know why you haven't been there.
Well, I wasn't on the board at that time.
We'll talk afterwards.
Yeah, but I also represent a unique perspective. I lived in London for three years outside of...
I lived in London for three years outside of, outside of the city, so I've driven these roads between the hamlets and the towns, and I understand how it makes the countryside so beautiful and come alive. One of the top comments we hear from residents in Franklin or people who are visiting here is how beautiful and green and the hills provide such an escape compared to other areas around the country, and people really appreciate that. And for that reason, in concept, I'm very supportive of the idea of preserving 70% green space so that our kids can have a creek to stomp in or a field to run through. And what you've described makes a lot of sense as I think about our rural county and more undeveloped areas. I'm curious, in a city that's already as developed as Franklin is, with pockets of future development, how you would envision that those hamlet communities kind of fitting within the city and not feeling like out parcels? That's the first question. The second question is probably an easier one for you to answer, and that's, in that hamlet model, are the residents of that hamlet free to roam across the countryside that you've preserved? And how do you utilize it?
Well, absolutely. I mean, were you on the public footpaths in England?
That's why I asked the question.
We're doing the same thing. And, and not only that, but the 40,000 acres, and not only that, now we're working with TPL on 100 miles along the Chattahoochee River. And we'll connect with public paths into the Belt Line of Atlanta. You know, we are changing not just our 40,000 acres, but we're affecting change in metro Atlanta. You know, and, and other people are doing it. But this is, this is 50 years from now, we're going to see the people that understand that, and they don't. You know, and, and, and you have choices. Are you going to choke to death on your popularity? Or are you going to make something of it? And so imagine, absolutely, those, those hamlets should be connected. Now, a question. How many can tell me, imagine where the raindrop that falls on the roof where you live makes it to the local tributary? How many can trace that path? And so where do you live? Where do you live?
I live in a community that's green. The morning and afternoon is people that have creeks, and I love my kids running water. So from that raindrop, I know where the drainage goes, I know where the creek goes, and where that creek goes. I can trace all the way to the river.
And, and would you agree that rain falls on this building? And every building in Franklin? And does your parks department and your public works and stormwater department work together well? So that's the beginning on how you get that connectivity, because water connects all this development. And if you start turning that into a green network with paths along it, you're suddenly going to find you've got a green, you know, and so many, so many of these, these waterways have been buried. And a lot of them are causing a lot of damage, because when you put stormwater in a pipe, it never has a chance to clean itself from the pollutants on the, on the streets. And when it comes, and it builds up speed, and, and then it does a lot of damage where it comes out. You know, and, and federal regulations used to require, they've just worried about getting it, this is where some of the short-sighted things were. To do the right thing 20 years ago, I had to break federal laws and dare them to shut me down. No, it got changed, and it wasn't because I was doing that, it was because a lot of people were working on it, and it just took forever for the federal government. But they knew I was serious, they never sent an inspector for seven years. Sometimes it's, you know, these written laws aren't always the right laws. And that's one of the first things you've got to do, is start asking those questions. Mayor, is it time to call this?
I'm going to have to get the shepherd's crook and pull you off, because I promised that you would, you would be here for one hour, and then I think you're expected maybe to be at the cocktail reception at the Harpeth Hotel. And everybody is certainly invited to meet in the library area of the Harpeth Hotel, and continue to ask these very interesting and pertinent questions that we're hearing and conversation with Steve. And so you see why we were excited when he came for Vision City, and we're really excited that he gave us this hour to have some conversation. So thank you, Steve. Let's give him a big hand.
Thank you.